About that. I'm going to start with organizational updates and employee recognitions. I'm going to start with Councilmember Flores, who wants to recognize someone.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate that. With us today, we have a person who is now leading one of our dynamic chambers of commerce here locally. We have Erica Garza. She started March 13th of this year and is now leading the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. So with that, Erica, invite you to the podium and give us a little intro and let us know about yourself, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Parker. Good afternoon, council members and Mr. Jay Chapa. Thank you for having me here. I very much appreciate it. I am the President and CEO of the Fort Worth Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I have been in the role for about three months, and I have to tell you, it's been an incredible honor for me to be able to serve this community. I can tell you firsthand experience that I've been able to see the collaboration, the community, and the support, and most importantly, for being able to have the ability to embrace me in this new role with the Hispanic Chamber. I'm really excited about how we're pivoting the business. We are very aware that we've got some challenges that are up front for us, but most importantly, as a team, as a community, we're working on initiatives that we can support our small businesses, create more Latino entrepreneurship opportunities, support corporate businesses as well, and be able to have educational initiatives. So with that being said, thank you so much, and I'm very grateful to be here and present myself with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Okay, next up, I'd like to call Holly Moyer, Human Resources Interim Director, to recognize our emerging leaders group.
Good afternoon, Holly Moyer, Interim HR Director, Mayor and Council. I'm excited about this opportunity to talk to you about our employees as emerging leaders. This is something that this program started in 2023, and it was a collaboration between Rebecca Doyle from the Young Professionals and Shannon Luce from our organizational development team. And as we looked at this, the first class that they had had 11 members as they went through this process of putting together a great program where they can have learning mechanisms, but also learn about each other and the organization as they become leaders in the future with the city. And so today, we have 49 graduates. So that's an accomplishment that I wanted to be able to recognize them for not only a great program, but word of mouth has shown that there is an interest here in this program moving forward. So I just want to give them a big shout out for that. So we appreciate you doing that. And so just a little bit about this emerging leaders program. It's not moving. Okay. So we had two classes of emerging leaders, so I wanted to recognize again the emerging leaders, too, if you would just stand up real quickly. Thank you so much. Some of the things that they worked on and had leadership with Jay Chapa and Richard Savala. So again, we appreciate them taking the time out of their busy schedules to meet with emerging leaders here, to talk about not only the city, but how they grow and develop into our future leaders here of the organization. And so one of the things that they started this year, which I think is pretty exciting, is this cross-development and science sessions. So not only are they looking at being leaders in our organization, but cross-functional departments. So an example of this is when they had the air quality group and working with the Parks and Recreation about burn bans. So when you think about that, if there's a situation that occurs, a communication and understanding of the processes and how it works is something that they have learned in this process, and it connects our employees closer with each other and to make sure that our community understands what's going on and what the needs are and how we can be better with our programs. So that's pretty exciting, something that, again, you could see from here, they collaborated very well. So a lot of work that has also went into the program is the knowledge that they learned from all these assessments and work that they did. So again, there's a lot of success here of understanding things from accountability to leading change, navigating difficult conversations. So that was a great thing that they learned from this program as well. So emerging leaders, one, if I can recognize you as well, please stand up. Thank you so much. And so again, a lot of learning that occurred here between coaching and managing, accountability and self-awareness in the program that has been developed through this process. And so one of the things I want to say to Shannon and to Rebecca is thank you again for putting this together. This is a great opportunity for our employees to learn and develop and become future leaders. And I just wanted to say that I think Shannon is like a proud mom because they have graduated from this program. So I just want to recognize her for that. So I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
I just want to mention, these kind of programs that are put in place by the HR Department and collaboration with staff are really going a lot of way to keep employees at the city because they have opportunities to grow, opportunities to learn new skills, and I think it's helping them understand that there's opportunities here to make a career out of the city on a long-term basis. Next up, we have Ori Fernandez, Assistant Director in Economic Development, to recognize one of our employees.
Thank you for being here, guys. Have a good one. Or you can stay. No one wants to stay.
Good afternoon. It is a privilege to recognize Cherie Gordon. Economic Development Coordinator within the Economic Development Department, as she was recently named to the 2025 Top 100 Influencers in Local Government List by the Emerging Local Government Leaders Professional Association. Cherie is no stranger to you, and she is an incredible asset to the City of Fort Worth's Economic Development Team, where her impact on the community is significant. Cherie works tirelessly behind the scenes as project manager for many of Fort Worth's most high-profile business recruitment and expansion projects. Over the past year alone, she played a key role in the delivery of nine projects, securing more than $925 million in private investment and creating or retaining an estimated 3,145 full-time jobs for the Fort Worth community. Her ability to juggle complex timelines, manage expectations with internal and external stakeholders, and coordinate seamlessly with high-profile companies like Bell, Siemens, and ITS Logistics demonstrates her dependability and her competitive drive to secure projects for Fort Worth. These accomplishments aren't just numbers, as Cherie's work actively ensures that Fort Worth continues to be a booming city for business and a center for growth in our target industries. Another thing that sets Cherie apart is her unwavering support for her team. She consistently goes above and beyond to help her colleagues, offering guidance, expertise, and of course, a healthy dose of humor. Whether she's advocating for a teammate in meetings or offering assistance on projects with looming deadlines, Cherie's collaborative spirit and strong work ethic are valued and appreciated by everyone around her. Additionally, Cherie's passion for Fort Worth makes her an exceptional networker, which has been crucial in building relationships between our team and the business community. She thrives on connecting people with resources that can solve their problems or provide potential partnership opportunities, bridging gaps between public and private entities alike. Cherie's creativity, drive, and unwavering belief in her work and her team make her an outstanding public servant who consistently embodies the City of Fort Worth's values. She's a key player in Fort Worth's growth, and our department and our city are very lucky to have her. Please join me in a round of applause to help celebrate and recognize her.
We're not sure what's going on here. And I just wanted to say, Cherie is top 100 in the country nationwide. I was recognized for that, so.
Cherie, you're always such a professional. These accolades are well-deserved. Thank you for doing such a great job on behalf of the City of Fort Worth, and your entire team is top-notch, but in particular, we're really proud of you today, and congrats on your recognition.
Thank you. I'm very proud to be a part of the City of Fort Worth and for the leadership that I have here at the city. Thank you.
It shows. Thank you so much.
Next up. Next up, I want to call up Jennifer Dykes to recognize stormwater staff.
Y'all come and stand. Okay, so I'm excited to be back again in front of y'all today and share with you that in May, the Stormwater Management Program received a national award from the Association of State Flood Plane Managers. Several of our team are active in this organization, which has a mission to reduce flood loss across the nation. So the program received the James Lee Witt Award for Local Excellence in Flood Plane Management, and this award recognizes outstanding programs or activities at the front lines of flood plane management, or what they consider as local programs where rubber meets the road. So over the last several years, the Stormwater Management Program has advanced several new efforts, such as our Non-Female Flood Risk Initiative, Flood Plane Development Permit Enforcement Program, High Water Warning Program Communication Improvements, our Community Rating System ranking improvements, which are saving residents more money on their flood insurance, and capital and maintenance service level improvements, all of which make significant contributions to flood risk management, and which is why our program has received this award. While many of our flood plane management activities are led by our Flood Plane Administrator, Lisa Biggs, and our outcomes of the groundwork set by our prior Flood Plane Administrator, Claire Davis, we have many members of our team here today because the award recognizes our overall program and teamwork efforts, which work together to advance our mission to protect people and property from harmful stormwater runoff.
Everyone's saying, "No more flooding."
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, lastly, just want to remind everyone, Thursday, City Hall will be closed. It's Juneteenth, a national holiday, and that Opals Walk happens that morning at Farrington Field. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jay. At this point, we're going to move into informal reports. Before we do that, I wanted to recognize our Councilmember-elect, Mia Hall is here today on behalf of District Six, and we'll recognize her tonight officially, but Mia, it's great to see you, and thank you for being here today. Congratulations. You're welcome. Okay, Jay, we're going to move into monthly, our first is monthly report on the release of areas from ETJ. DJ Harrell is available if we have any questions? No? DJ, just want to say thank you very much to you and your team and City Legal for a lot of important testimony this legislative session on this issue and a few others. Next up is our IR and City Flood Risk Regulation Update with Jennifer Dyke. Anybody have questions for Jennifer or her team? We're going to roll through. I bet we have some questions on this one. City of Fort Worth, Fourth of July Operations Communications, Chief Aldridge, I want you to come on up, and I see Torchie and Cindy both here with their signs and everything. Thank you, ladies. We appreciate you both very much. Gina's here in spirit. I feel her. Absolutely. Chief Aldridge, thank you.
Yes. So in light of this morning's meeting, I have to tell you, I'm not going to recommend or ask for any fee or rate increases for this, so. But I will give a general overview because we know Fourth of July is one of those times that's extremely busy for us, extremely busy for the city, and in all honesty, council members receive quite a few complaints after Fourth of July is over. So it's very important to note, in the very, very beginning, fireworks are illegal, plain and simple. There's laws on the books. You can't possess them. You can't have them. You can't shoot them off. You can't do anything with fireworks. And so they are illegal in the city limits of Fort Worth. One thing that is very important to note is that we have a lot of celebratory gunfire on Fourth of July. We are doing our best to get people to not do that because what goes up comes down. And those projectiles definitely hurt people, damage property, and hurt animals. So we know that we're going to have the Fort Worth Fourth, which is at the Panther Pavilion. On July 3rd, we have Como, which is a very large event, very historic event for us, very well-attended. And the Fourth of July has quite a few other events that are going on throughout the city. So as you can imagine, we have quite a few fire, police, EMS resources that are out on the streets, making sure everybody stays safe. With that, each patrol division is going to have extra officers out there answering calls for service to help combat some of these fireworks calls. We also have a hotline for fireworks, the 392-4222. The Fire Department gets voluntary staff and civilians to staff those phones to answer the calls and pass those complaints on to us. You also, we also have an email that we can, that they can, that individuals can email to, which is reportfireworks.fortworthtexas.gov if they'd like to do that, or they can use the My Fort Worth app. There are quite a few avenues in which people can report fireworks and report issues within their city. The Police Department, of course, fireworks and the calls that we go to are going to be regulated on, the type of calls that we get because they're prioritized. So life and death situations, of course, we're going to handle first. And if fireworks calls, sometimes those priorities go down the list a little bit and take us a little bit of time to get to it. The Fort Worth Fire Department, they're going to be available to take all the fireworks that we confiscate off of the individuals out in our city. They're also going to be available to provide messaging for us through their platforms. They also are providing additional call takers on their side for our computer systems. And one of the best things that we have is we have such a great partnership with Jim and his team. We work very closely together. I know on the Third of July, we have set up, you know, strike teams and different teams of the Police Department, but we partner with the Fire Department so we can have access into those communities if something does happen. Our community engagement is a real big, large portion of what we do, getting out into the community, educating the community on our fireworks ordinance and the laws associated with that. You can see Cindy and Torchie behind me. They've been very instrumental on Eastside, going to the apartment complexes, educating them, and they've been able to curb a lot of the fireworks call that actually happened. So unless there's any specific questions about the IR itself or fireworks, I'm here to answer any of them.
Any questions for Chief Aldridge? Councilmember Flores?
Yes, Chief, when it comes time, I'd like to get a little historical data, just to keep this in mind. For example, the number of contacts either PD or FD make, you know, with residents, be it a warning or just following up on a complaint.
Sure.
And also violations issued. And then just a general reminder to everyone, you know, my PSA for the day, you can also report it using the My Fort Worth app.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Carlos. Any other questions or comments from council? No? Thank you. You may not like fees, but you like fines, don't you?
Yes.
And it's a $2,000 fine. Like what I did there? Ladies, thank you very, very much for all your advocacy on behalf of the city. Absolutely. We appreciate you. Okay, we're going to keep moving. The Eastside Transportation Plan, and Kelly Porter is here on behalf of TPW or LaChandra Singh-Fellows with Department Services. Do we have any questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Nettles?
A brief update on the Lancaster.
It's a brief update, or did you have a specific question?
No, a brief update. I may have one once you.
Okay, so the corridor is fully funded from 820, from 820 West over to Riverside with federal funding and state funding and some city funding through COG. Construction is supposed to start around 2027, and they're going to about 60% design now.
Are we specifically talking about Roseville or Lancaster?
Lancaster.
Lancaster, okay. And how, how's our partnership working with Trinity Metro?
It's been fine. We bet with them and COG over the last several months to try to figure out where we need to sync up the bus stops and the, and the crosswalks, so it's a safer corridor. So that was like our last order of business. And their, COG worked on with them on where specific like public or private stations would be once the service is upgraded. So it's going pretty well.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great update.
Any other questions for Kelly? Thank you, Kelly. Next up is Management of Donation Boxes.
Yes, Mayor.
Wendy Turpin? This is like Groundhog Day. Be honest, staff, do y'all just recycle the same IR and then touch it up?
Just change the date.
Because we always get this question, right? Almost every year. Yes. Councilmember Lars Dorf.
So thank you, Mayor. So this is one that's, I'm sure it's affecting a lot of other districts, but especially up north. And I learned about the, well, two years ago, whenever I first asked if we could just completely outright ban these, I was told that they're actually protected under the First Amendment of the Constitution since it's a form of solicitation. But Supreme Court did say that we can regulate it, and I really want to say thank you to staff for doing all the work they did, and especially our legal team who did all the background research on what we can and can't do. What's really terrible about these is the fact that the victims of, essentially what it is, illegal dumping, is the business owners. And so I know that right now, they're required to have it removed on their own dime if someone illegally places a donation bin on their property. And it's big business for these retailers because it's not, very, very few nonprofits are actually managing these boxes. And there's a few good ones out there, but majority aren't. And so what I'd just like to ask is if we can continue to find a way to have meaningful enforcement against these, because we're seeing more and more and more pop up as it becomes a more and more profitable business for those individuals to put together a $200 box, drop it on somebody's property. It becomes an eyesore for that business, for the community. They come by in the middle of the night, they empty it out, they go and sell it, and they make their money. Meanwhile, the property owner is the one left with the mess behind. I talked to a couple junk removal companies about how they would handle it, and the three I talked to, they actually said 90% of what they would, that they were the ones confiscating it, they could actually recycle to keep it out of the landfill, which, after this morning's conversation, that's incredibly important. And so like all things that we talk about here in the city, any enforcement or fines or whatever it may be, just having teeth on it. So all that to say, I'd just really like to ask staff if we can continue to work this to figure out a way we can actually not punish the property owners, since they are essentially the victim of that crime, and find a way that ways the city can help clean them up and then send a message to those property donation bin owners that, you know, this is not the place to do it. This is not the place to drop them in business parking lots. We have some business owners taking matters in their own hand, wrapping them with Saran Wrap and doing whatever they can. Now I'm afraid they may end up getting sued at some point. Who knows? So one, again, thank you for all the work that's been put into this, and just ask that we continue to find a way to kind of regulate these a little bit more.
Yes, I'm fully on board and will absolutely pursue that.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Wendy? Thank you. Next is our mid-year update for fiscal 2025 on illegal campsite cleanup trends, and I think Wendy is also available if there are questions on this topic. Councilmember Hill? And Tara also, both of you are here. Wendy, you're back up, sorry. I think I have questions for both of you, actually. Wendy, do you know how many illegal campsites we have in the City of Fort Worth? Do we have those pinpointed or identified?
So we get about 10 to 20 identified almost every single day.
And are we keeping pace with cleaning up the amount that we have versus the ones that are reported?
Yes. As a matter of fact, we are able to keep pace at this time.
Excellent. That's good to know. Thank you. And then Tara, I had a quick question for you. Is there a correlation at all between those individuals participating in the High Impact Pilot Project and those that we're finding in the illegal campsites that are living there?
I would have to find out about that.
I'd be curious to know if some of those individuals we're working with on a one-on-one basis are living in those campsites, and how are we helping them find shelter houses?
Right. I do know there's some overlap. The High Impact Program targeted the areas with a lot of illegal camping, and so those seven target areas in High Impact are the ones with a lot of illegal camping, so there probably is some overlap.
If you could find that out and report back, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. We can, we can say that everyone housed through High Impact was unsheltered and camping somewhere, most likely in one of the seven target areas.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Nettles and Councilmember Hales?
Thank you. I'm looking at the map. I think it's on, yeah, IR page four, and I see the concentration of the illegal campsites in the inner part of the city, preferably right there in the downtown area. And as we talk about the High Impact, as well as funding that we give towards a homeless initiative, are we matching our funds in the location where we see the biggest issue of the illegal camps?
So for, for the High Impact Program, when we started that last May, we used data from the My Fort Worth app to do a heat map of where are people reporting illegal camping throughout the city. And from there, we looked at those seven areas, and you are right, a lot of it is in the central area. So about four of the seven target areas, downtown, historic South Side, East Lancaster, and near South Side, and part of Beach and Hemp Hill are all in that central area. So yes, we understand that a lot of the illegal camping is in that area, and so that's where we put a lot of target areas.
A reminder, we're going to have an update on the High Impact Pilot today as well. Anybody else?
So I know we talked this morning, Wendy, about these illegal campsites. I know you said, I see this increase from 5,200 to 5,600 forecast for this year. I know there are only, how many Uspire teams will we have enough to manage this increase this year?
We use the Uspire teams throughout the city, so we have citywide, and we also have some specifically donated to homelessness. And every single week, we adjust based on our needs. So I would say, yes, currently, we are able to meet the needs and the demands, and that's our expectation. What we've presented in that IR, we expect to be able to clean and meet this year.
Okay.
Is it fair to say, Wendy, it's probably hard to, because we weren't as focused on this effort as we were prior to fiscal year '22 and then into '23, right? So the way you guys are tracking the data around camp cleanup is so much more enhanced than it used to be. So what I'm saying is, it may feel like we're playing whack-a-mole a little bit when you look at these numbers, but I think our reporting structure is much better, the use of My Fort Worth app, the proactive nature of which we're working. Each of your offices are really helping with constituents to make sure they know this is a service we provide and we're taking really seriously. So I just want to point that out as something that while I know it feels that maybe it's getting worse, it's actually us really focused on this effort to make it better here in the City of Fort Worth. At least, that's the way I read the data. You can speak to that, Wendy.
That is exactly true. Since 2023, when we started a real in-depth program, we have focused on the planning and analytics of this and making sure that we are tracking the money that we're spending, the amount of people, the amount of time that we are putting forth to this effort. So yes, the data and analytics are dramatically improved.
Thank you. Councilmember Nettles?
Yes, I do want to ask another question. Can you give me from the timeframe a resident goes into My Fort Worth app and make that complaint or called in to the timeframe the campus actually cleaned up?
I cannot, however Neil Johnson can, and I believe he's here.
Yes.
Nice pivot.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yes, I can answer that question. It varies, depends on, depending on the size of the camp. Within my team, we kind of categorize camps between small, medium, and large. As you know, some, some camps may be easily accessible, so those types of camps where we categorize maybe smaller in capacity, larger quantity, small amount of campers or illegal campers, we can, we can generally clean within 24 to 72 hours. Generally, with the resources that we have with the Uspire and reorganization, we're actually getting to those within 24 hours. Medium, the larger-scale camps, obviously, there's more resources. Some of them are tucked away in, in deep areas, into wooded areas. It allows, it, it tends to, we have to plan a little bit more. With the efforts with other departments and, you know, collaboration with other departments, with Parks and Recreation, Tech Dot is a big influencer in those also. We generally, with the resources, we can get to those within five, five days to, to, within one to two weeks. But generally, right now, we're getting to them within five days.
You said within five days?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I appreciate that because realistically, we want to have a timeframe when people call in our office and, because basically when they call today, they want to move today, and realistically, that doesn't.
Exactly.
We can't do that for different reasons.
Correct.
So, thank you.
Yeah. You're doing a great job. I'm a secret shopper on the My Fort Worth app, and so I report them in a non-marial way, and it works just fine.
Thank you so much.
Really quick turnaround, and the response back's working. So just kudos to the entire team. I know it's multiple departments making this happen. Thank you, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Wendy. Okay, next up is Dave Lewis on report on city pools and partnerships with YMCA for access to pools. Are there any questions to Dave's IR? Councilmember Nettles? Councilwoman Nettles?
Yes, I'm gonna have Dave to come up. We also have a special guest as well with him. Uh, I asked for this IR because I think it was important, especially during the summertime, uh, access to pools and how I know the city of Fort Worth. Uh, we have our individual pools that we provide for our residents, but we have a greater partnership throughout our city with, such as the YMCA and others. And so, uh, I kind of, and it's our IR want to articulate those locations, and so I talked to Dave earlier about it, and so he'll do that this time.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to expand on this informal report. Um, as you know, we have a longstanding history of partnerships with the YMCA across multiple facilities, across most, multiple program areas. I did want to introduce Mr. Mike Brown, the CEO of YMCA's of Fort Worth, and he'll come up and say a few words whenever I am finished with the topic at hand. Um, I didn't bring this in case there are any hard questions. This is actually an award that we were given. Uh, recently, the city of Fort Worth Park and Recreation Department was named the YMCA Partner of the Year, so we're very proud of that. And the, the truth is, it takes a good partner to know a good partner, and the YMCA has been a tremendous partner for us. We, Mike and I have worked on several different initiatives, including pool access. We believe that it isn't solely dependent on the city-owned or city-managed pools to serve the, the city's needs when it comes to pools. And the YMCA has always been a great partner that's open to new ideas, new ways of doing things to provide that greater access. Mike and I have talked about opportunities when it comes to not only facilities and pools, but therapeutic recreation, senior programs, youth development. So we've got a lot of things, um, in the works. Staff also did have a meeting yesterday with a completely privately-owned pool that they brought up the opportunity for us to partner with them to provide more access to another agency that has a pool that's underutilized as well. So we are looking for those opportunities, um, but I do want to, again, take this opportunity to highlight the YMCA as such a great partner for us.
And if you go to one of Mike's ribbon cuttings, he'll let you push him in the pool.
That is true.
He already did, too late.
The mayor did push me at Eastside. Uh, thank you for letting me come and speak. I've spoken to several of you about pool access. Uh, and first thing I want to say is, the award that we gave and, and the relationship that we've had, I've lived in seven different communities across this country. Fort Worth has been the easiest of cities to work with. Uh, you all have a partnership philosophy and mindset which says, none of us can do all this work by ourselves. So I appreciate that. Uh, several of us have talked about that we have relationships at three of our pools. We've talked about why not have a relationship with all of our pools, and we need to do a better job, of course, as a Y to make sure that the community knows that access means they don't have to be a member, they pay the same rates as any city pool, uh, and can walk into a Y without a membership and participate anytime they'd like. Uh, it's important to know that we have taught 50,000 folks to date in safety around water, uh, and that we do about 4,500 swim lessons a year, uh, in the Fort Worth region. And so aquatics and pool safety is extremely important, plus the fact that folks in the summer like to, to come and join us at our pools. So I look forward to continued conversation and appreciate the partnership that, that all of us have had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? No. Thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Yeah, and I, one thing I wanted to, um, even with Dave, and you got, doing a great job, and even with our website, I want to see if we can make it more, um, feasible on our website. And I do, they are on there, but it's about five or seven clicks in order to get to the list of pools, and I think it'll, it'll benefit our residents, uh, if there is a list there, uh, and a list where you can actually click on it so you can get a location. I think some of it's there, but it takes a few clicks to get to it.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Thank you for highlighting that. We do have a location on our website that lists all of the publicly accessible pools, but we do want to make it so you click on aquatics and the list is right there, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you again.
Thank you, Dave. And don't go far, the, uh, unimproved alley mowing program contractors is an IR. Any questions on that one?
Yeah, that was my IR.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Nettles.
Um, and I think we touched on this last week during the budget piece, um, as it relates to, uh, can you just give me a brief summary on our contract? I know Jared's gone, so I'm doing his, his bidding today.
Sure, yeah. Over the course of the last month, we've had several questions about the alleyway mowing program. The question that was answered in the informal report was about the two contractors that we currently use. We do also have some IRs in the work, um, that are explaining, you know, what the cost of graveling alleyways would look like and what the impact would be, and the feasibility of doing that, so we will have that, uh, in front of you probably in August.
Okay, and, because I think one of my issue was with us having only two contractors, uh, they haven't been able to get around to certain areas in a timely fashion. So I don't know if that's just the contractors we have, no shade, or if we need to increase, uh, our contractors in order to, uh, deal with mowing. It, it has been a really issue in the historic South Side.
Yeah, we do issue an RFP, and those are the two contractors that responded, so we did contracts with them to fulfill the alleyways that are in the mowing program, but we do keep data and statistics on their success rate as we get invoiced monthly on it, and they invoice us based on their work, and we do investigations to make sure that they did the work that they said they did, but we can provide a report of the data of their success in, in maintaining those.
Yeah, I think I'm more concerned on the timeline from the time they're notified that an alley needs to be cut and when they actually cut the alley.
Sure. Uh, those two contractors are on a quarterly routine schedule, and it would actually be staff that responds whenever there are those one-offs, um, so we can, we can also share some response reports on those as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Council, that's the conclusion of our IRs. We can now move into any questions you may have or changes to memberships on boards and commissions, zoning cases, or MNC logs, that'll all be on the January, not January, June 24th agenda. Okay, then we'll move straight into presentations. The first is the Westside Village Economic Development Program Agreement with Michael Henning presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael Henning, Economic Development Department. Um, so we wanted to provide a, an overview of our proposed Economic Development Program Agreement in support of the development of Westside Village, uh, or rather, an area currently, uh, known as Westside Village. I say currently only inasmuch as that, uh, the developer is currently going through, uh, design and branding efforts, and so that name may change in time. But the area that we're talking about here is the area that is generally shown here, uh, located along the eastern edge of University Drive, just south of the west fork of the Trinity River. Uh, as you can see in the image to the right, it is an area, a collection of, uh, city blocks that is currently primarily industrial in nature. It is also the site of the now former Fort Worth ISD Administration Building, uh, as well as the Audubon Group set of properties. So in all, what would be replacing those properties would amount to a proposed $1.7 billion dollar mixed-use development that is being led by Larkspur Capital. Now, this development would occur over four separate phases that could begin as early as 2025, so later this year, and would stretch through the end of 2035, and we'll be, uh, going into a little more detail about those specific phases here in a moment. But in total, it is estimated that this project would lead to the development of approximately 880,000 square feet of new Class A office, 238,000 square feet of new retail, uh, and approximately 175 key full-service hotel, uh, and approximately 1,785 new multifamily units. And importantly, uh, it would also lead to approximately $4, $45 million in infrastructure improvements within this area. This gives a general sense as to the design and, uh, overall condition that is being proposed for the site, uh, as part of the development. And as you can see here, uh, it really prioritizes having a human-scale pedestrian-oriented environment that is distinct from other surrounding sub-districts. This project would also involve the first, uh, instance of mass timber development here in Fort Worth. In fact, this would actually be one of the first, uh, developments involving mass timber anywhere in North Texas. So the, the relocation of the Fort Worth ISD Administration Building and the relocation of the Audubon Group dealerships has really created an opportunity to reevaluate, uh, and, and lead a conversation around the development of this site at a scale that could really support the creation of a new sub-district. Um, now, as we've discussed here recently, uh, this area is really challenged by, uh, by extensive infrastructure needs as well as, uh, being prone to certain flood issues, and so, uh, the investment in the infrastructure as well as the, uh, general market, market conditions and the cost of building this overall project creates a financial gap that prevents it from being able to move forward without some form of support from the public sector, uh, in order to just meet the basic, uh, requirements of the market and of lenders for this type and quality of development within this timeframe. Now, I mentioned that this would include the first anticipated use of mass timber within Fort Worth, uh, but importantly, it would also represent the largest delivery of new office inventory in 43 years by a single project here in Fort Worth. Now, just breaking out the overall commitments that would be, uh, committed to by the developer, it would involve a minimum $1.7 billion of overall capital investment for the mixed-use development in four phases. Of that, a minimum 1.275 billion must be for hard costs. And I'm not going to go through all of these phases in explicit detail, but I just want to, uh, walk you through just the, the overall delivery of those phases. So it would amount to a minimum $410 million by the end of 2030, uh, the delivery of a minimum $370 million worth of total improvements by the end of 2032, minimum $380 million by the end of 2033, and a minimum of $530 million by the end of 2035. And of course, you can see, uh, more specific detail around the delivery of certain components. And now, in support of this $1.7 billion project, staff is recommending an overall incentive package that would amount to $125 million. Now, breaking that out, that would consist of a proposed 15-year economic development program agreement that would amount to an estimated $80 million as well, uh, and just, um, that, uh, that 15-year agreement would be based off of, uh, annual grants that are associated with the delivery of each of those four phases of development, and those grants would be based on up to 85% of the incremental property taxes on just the non-residential portion of the property, right? So we've been prioritizing commercial development here in Fort Worth, and so this, uh, overall incentive package reflects that priority. Additionally, the city will seek to support the, uh, will seek support from the newly established Near Westside TIF, uh, for the reimbursement of up to $45 million of infrastructure costs for this project. Now, this really illustrates the type of public-private partnership that we seek in utilizing our TIFs to be able to address the infrastructure needs that are found within that area, right? So it's an opportunity for us to accelerate, uh, the investment and the improvements in flood control and in streetscape improvements by partnering with a developer through a project like this. I know, as you can see here, the amounts would be capped on a per-phase basis in the amounts outlined here, uh, to a total not to exceed 45 million. Now, I need to stress that that is all subject to approval by the TIF Board, uh, once it is fully formed and, and, um, brings it forward for consideration. So just to summarize the overall impact of this project, you can see along the left side, the key, uh, overall deal points that would be committed to as part of this project, and on the right, you can see the, um, amount that is estimated in support of this project at $80 million through the 15-year City Chapter 380 Agreement, as well as the proposed $45 million in infrastructure reimbursement through the TIF. I will quickly pause here just to make clear, uh, the vast majority of that $45 million through the TIF will be generated by increment from this project. So effectively, this, this project would be, uh, serving our ability to be able to deliver that infrastructure. The overall combined incentives on a gross basis would be $125 million, as I just outlined, but on a net present value basis that amounts to just over $82 million. That amounts to an estimated city participation rate of approximately 6.1%, or a private-to-public ratio of 16 to 1. Looking at the overall net taxes that this would generate for the city, uh, you can see here that this would, uh, generate an estimated $72 million in new property taxes, uh, again on net present value basis over the term of this agreement, as well as over $18 million in estimated new sales tax, $30 million in estimated new hotel occupancy tax, uh, for a total amount of nearly $121 million in net new taxes to the city by supporting this project and, and filling the gap to allow it to move forward and happen in the first place. So in all, the city would be net positive beginning in year one. All of these incentives are completely performance-based. If they do not deliver these phases, then they forfeit, uh, the grants and, and are subject to certain other penalties that are associated with the, the terms of this project. Uh, we also estimate that the full cost of the project would be, uh, fully supported inside of 12 years. So with that, staff is recommending that the city enter into a 15-year economic development program agreement to provide grants of up to $80 million, and to pursue that consideration by the newly-established TIF for an agreement to reimburse up to $45 million in public improvements. Uh, the MNC for council consideration for the economic development program agreement would be brought forward on the June 24th meeting. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michael. Council, any questions? No? Looks great. Thank you. Next up is Shree Gordon on Wistrung Economic Develop, Development Corporation, excuse me, Tax Development, Tax Abatement, can't read today.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this presentation is to propose a tax abatement agreement with Wistrung. Wistrung's an electronics manufacturer based in Taiwan, related to the semiconductor industry, major strategic partner and supplier with Nvidia. City of Fort Worth is a member of the Texoma Semiconductor Tech Hub and excited to partner in the semiconductor industry. They're conducting a site search for, uh, facility manufactured components related to Nvidia AI supercomputers, would have location for two companion projects and competing sites in El Paso, Nashville, and Fremont, California. The first of the two sites, uh, Project Eagle location is at 5,200 Heritage Parkway, Denton County. And the second of the two sites, Project Westport, is located at 14601 Mobility Way and the Alliance Texas footprint. For the company commitments, Wistrung proposes to establish two locations with a minimum capital investment of 687 million. The real property improvements would occur by June 30th of 2026, and the business personal property by January 1st, 2027. This is an aggressive timeline, and they do plan to begin construction this summer, depending on the company decision, which is contingent on action this council would take, potentially on June 24th. There's a minimum of 888 full-time jobs and the average salary at 63,000. Staff was thoughtful on how we wanted to structure this, um, proposal, and it's designed to encourage both projects to move forward. We're proposing a 10-year tax abatement term. If the investment of, if the investment level is standalone, it would be a 70% tax abatement for Project Eagle and a 50% tax payment for Project Westport, but if both projects are delivered, it ramps to an 80% for Project Eagle and 60% for Project Westport. Again, with the 63,000 in average salary, if you, we do not make that requirement, it forfeits the annual tax abatement in that current year, not making the investment results in default, and failure to make job commitment also results in forfeiture of the tax abatement in a given year. So for the combined project summary, minimum of 687 million in capital investment, 888 jobs, the average wage at 63,000. We're recommending the Project Eagle up to 80% and Westport up to 60%. The taxable value, this represents, um, what we think would be the appraised value as it comes onto the tax rolls of $607 million. Would give them an estimated benefit of $30 million, and the net present value of that benefit at 22.6. The net new taxes to the city over that 10-year period is 10.6 million. So again, that total tax value is 41.4 with the abatement of 30.8 million, but still the city receiving 10.6 million over that 10-year period. So the year the city is net positive is year one, and the full incentive coverage period is 7.22 years. And recommendation, 10-year tax abatement agreement, up to 80% of value of real and business property for Project Eagle and 60% for Project Westport. We did post a 30-day public notice on May 24th and plan to be at MNC on June 24th. I did want to recognize that we do have some guests in the audience with us today. We have some representatives from Wistrung. have some representatives from Wistrung, from Leian Associates, and from AVP. Thank you, and any questions?
Thanks, Shree. Counsel, questions or comments? No? Great job. We appreciate you. Okay, Counsel, our next update is on the homeless high-impact pilot, and Tara Perez
Mayor and Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to present a one-year update on this pilot. To start us off, the team at Community and Public Engagement, Communication and Public Engagement has put together a little video.
Everybody's recovery looks a little bit different. We provide recovery-oriented support services to individuals. We consist of a medical staff person, a psych staff person, an RN. We have landlord engagement. We have benefit specialists, and we have housing specialists. And through High Impact, we can actually bring those services into their home or into their community.
I don't have to be on the streets anymore because of High Impact. Goals and stuff that I had on the streets aren't the same as the goals I have now.
Well, your apartment is very, very cute.
Thank you.
Some beautiful decorations.
Thank you.
I love the pictures.
Thank you.
Where did you get those?
I got those from Officer Mike. He gave me this welcome package. I mean, he also looked out for me, you know, out, out there in the streets too.
Veronica's tent was closer to the fence area. She was wanting to get off the streets.
Fortunately, we really pride ourselves and we emphasize meeting people where they are. And I know I've used relationships a ton in this conversation, but it's, it's at the crux of everything we do.
We allow the client to be the driver of their recovery and kind of set goals together to kind of figure out where the client's at, meet them where they're at, and figure out what it is that they would like to work on.
For them to have a place they can call their own is morale boost for all of them.
Ms. Jane is a name that we've shared around downtown since the early 2000s. Given her outbursts and just presence throughout downtown, she's been a common fixture. We get calls and businesses are concerned with this individual that's experiencing some mental health crisis that they just want to see her get the help. But at the same time, as you have new businesses coming or looking at downtown as a place that they'd like to do business or have conventions, it is a deterrent. And I know that she was recently housed and she seemed healthier. She was willing to have a conversation with us. She said she just enjoyed being downtown and wanted to come down and see her friends downtown.
I was fortunate enough to know Tom and Lucy on several different occasions. When we saw them, we took that as an opportunity to engage and embrace them. And I think that was one of the catalysts to be able to get them to trust us and trust me. And for something to have such a positive resolution in a very unconventional way that we regularly in this job was, was huge.
Success is a little different for everybody. Going to college and getting a degree in a high-paying job is what a lot of people think is a success. Oftentimes, mental health interferes with people even thinking about their hygiene or thinking about taking care of themselves. Just getting out of bed and taking a shower is often a wonderful success for someone.
Developing those relationships and being able to pass along that information to you and maybe make that connection to your High Impact program is, is much more apt to succeed than a police officer pulling up and trying to arrest somebody for pain handling or soliciting or things of that nature.
So just a little context about the High Impact Pilot, where it started. So I believe there was one week in the fall of '23, had meetings with three different groups. One was Downtown Fort Worth Inc. and the ambassadors, and they were sharing, they keep track of how many people who live unsheltered downtown. At that time, they shared there were about 30 people living downtown unsheltered, but about eight were highly visible and caused a lot of issues. And they were trying to talk through with us, like what were the possibilities, what could we do? Another meeting that week was with the Historic Southside Neighborhood Association. They were talking about folks they saw experiencing unsheltered homelessness who also seemed to have some severe mental health issues. And a lot of that conversation revolved around how do we safely navigate public spaces with our unsheltered neighbors? The third meeting was pulled together by Councilwoman Beck at Broadway Baptist Church, and that was folks from near Southside, Mike Brennan's group, talking with businesses and a lot of folks at the city on how do we navigate some things that are not quite enforcement issues around homelessness and mental illness, but more about people really needing services and to be off the street. So from those meetings, there were two ideas that really percolated. One is how do we do something with most, the most highly visible folks? And also, how do we bring some high-level psychiatric services to our homeless population on the street? And so that's how the High Impact Pilot was birthed, trying to address that intersection of unsheltered homelessness and mental illness in these seven really hard-hit areas. So the ACT in the High Impact stands for Assertive Community Treatment. So this is a model that started in the 1970s in Wisconsin. People there at a psychiatric hospital noticed that there were some people cycling through. They would come for treatment in the psychiatric hospital. They would be discharged. They would see them back in six months. And so they started talking about what would it look like? And they put together a staff model, but instead of having the staff be at the hospital, the staff was in the community. So it was kind of like a mobile psychiatric hospital. And over time, the homeless system kind of put its twist on that about we have to have folks in housing and have those psychiatric services to keep people in housing. So again, it launched in May. It concludes, the pilot, 17-month pilot concludes this September. We have our contract with MHMR, and they have some sub-grantees, which I'll talk about in a minute, and then these are the target areas. Okay. So I think one thing that's important to remember is this is not a program for everyone and is not a program for everyone that is unsheltered. So on any given day, we have approximately 900 unsheltered folks in the city of Fort Worth. But this program is specifically targeting those that are most visible, that I would say have an outsized or disproportionate impact on their neighbors and on their businesses. It's people that you notice when they're gone. For example, one of the MPOs said he got questions from patrol officers, like, "I haven't seen Tom lately. Where's Tom? What did you do with Tom?" And the MPO had the opportunity to say, "Well, he was housed." So it's people that you notice. This was our emphasis in the first year, identifying potential clients, training up that team. And want to recognize some partners that are here today. Leading the MHMR team now is Teresa Munoz and her colleague Leah Harner. If y'all could stand up for a second. So they have been amazing at quickly housing people, and they really embody the idea, we're going to do whatever it takes to help people get off the street and get the services they need. Another strong partner has been Partnership Home. Lauren King is here today. It's formerly Tarrant County Homeless Coalition. They have a strong landlord engagement program, and they worked with us with a landlord engagement coordinator to talk with landlords. So we have a scattered site approached where people are housed. It's not all in one place that takes into consideration client choice, but also quick access to housing. JPS and the Acclaim Physicians Group especially is also a partner. They have the physician assistant on the team. And also, I'd like to recognize my colleague Kristy Hrock from Homeless Strategies. She has years of experience as a social worker and was really instrumental in helping shape this program. One bump that we did run into this year in the program is there were 20 housing vouchers that we anticipated being able to use to house high-impact clients, but they weren't available due to some, a shortage of some HUD funding. These are the measures we used. And when we were thinking about what measures do we want to use, I went back to thinking about those three meetings that really kind of birthed this program, what those interests were. And the interests were pretty simple. Get people with severe mental illness that are sleeping outside off the street and keep them off the street. And so we really shaped the performance measures around those two things. So our performance measures, we want to have everything accomplished by September 30th, but this is just a, a look at where we are one year into it. So our goal was that 70% offered housing would accept it. Right now, we're at 89% of those offered housing accepted it. We also have a goal that after being housed for one year, that 70% of those folks are still housed. So we began on May 1. The first folks were housed in that month of May, but we looked at from then until the end of April, 49 clients have been housed through the program. And right now, 98% of those are still in housing. The goal was to provide 80 people, the ACT psychiatric and medical team services. We're serving 78 clients. Again, housing assistance to 40, have met that goal with 41. And then providing assistance leveraging other programs. And this is where we had to get creative and are still working with the loss of some vouchers there. And this is a look at where people are housed by target area. So a few things for context. And looking at it deeper, we realized that the intersections of Beach Street, I think they cross through three different police divisions and had lots of MPOs. So we had a lot of referrals from Beach Street. Right now, our only areas of focus with the limited housing we have left are near Southside and Northside. And so we think that will even out the referrals housed from those areas. Presented this information six months ago, and it really hasn't changed. That, that profile of the high-impact client, it's still someone with a homeless span of seven and a half years, about 54, still have high acceptance rate. The most meaningful stat to me, though, has been when we track how many times we have to ask people if they want housing before they say yes. And that median number has remained at one. And so it's, it's very interesting. A lot of folks say yes the first time they are asked. We have a few that it takes many, many times, dozens of times, but the median number is one. I want to take a second here and recognize some MPOs. MPOs have been at the center of making this program successful. And wanted to recognize, and I think we have Officer Kuzinka here and Officer Marquez. If y'all will wave your hands. Thank you. So the MPOs have been valuable because it wasn't just submitting the name and a date of birth. It was, we met with them, talked about this program, introduced them to Teresa and Leah in the High Impact Team. A lot of times, they were able to help us with warm handoffs because they know the people that are unsheltered in their area. And so it was just beyond referrals. It was leveraging the relationship they had to connect them with High Impact Team and for people that can offer services. And also helping find people. And so just recognizing that. So Officer Kuzinka is in Council District 3, and that's the Camp Bowie West Las Vegas Trail area. And he has had nine folks be housed because of his referrals and leveraging those relationships. Officer Hernandez, he's on Beach Street, Council District 4. And then Officer Marquez is Historic Southside, and he's helped us house six referrals. At the one-year mark of a pilot, it's a good opportunity to reflect on what we have learned, what has gone well, what has not gone well. And so this is some of our learning. When we say intensive efforts, we mean intensive. Some of the clients are seen every single day by someone on the High Impact Team. The High Impact Team has a 24/7 phone number that is answered, because again, this is centering on very high-needs clients. One, we're also seeing some great early success with those folks who need mental health services, seeking and, and getting those mental health treatments. So again, the pilot has just started, but already we have almost 40% of people that are getting mental health treatment. One of the things that I suspected is we would have a lot of high users of our medical system in our High Impact Program. This has proven not true. So one of the exceptions was the program was able to house one of the highest 911 callers in the city of Fort Worth. And so he's housed through High Impact, I think MedStar. Fire, appreciate that. But that's not the general rule. A lot of the clients were referred by MPOs, and their interactions have mainly been with law enforcement because of complaints from citizens and businesses. A lot of times, they were off the radar. For example, hadn't received any kind of health services in 10 years. Again, the MPOs have been a vital part of the program. One thing that we, we learned the hard way is that, you know, when your target grows, when we have seven targets and some of the areas are rather large, it dilutes the impact a bit. And so we are going to be taking some next steps to figure out how to address that issue. So for next steps, we anticipate coming before you on August 12, asking that the program be continued based on meeting our performance measures. It's already built into the general fund-based budget. Again, one of the next steps we mentioned is wanting to go back with Hope and the MPOs and other partner departments and have individualized plans for these seven target areas. While we've been able to house some of the highly visible folks, we don't have the capacity to keep doing that. So what are other things we can do? We also are going to have more outreach workers, and so we're trying to be thoughtful about how we use those resources to also help lessen the impacts in the High Impact areas. And the, the last thing we're doing is working with partners to secure some long-term housing assistance, because that is what is going to enable us to transfer some existing clients and to be able to take on new clients. And that is it. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Tara. Councilwoman Hill? First of all, Tara, thank you so much and the entire MPO team. You all do amazing work, and it shows. This is working. When y'all come back to us, I'd love, in September, and kind of give us another update on this, I'd love for you to come back with a recommendation for, and use the entire year of 2026, to come up with a plan on how we can scale this as a city. And it's only been a year, but I think there's a huge opportunity here that if we don't take the time to plan, we're going to miss an opportunity to, to continue to serve the homeless in Fort Worth. And I just want to commend y'all again. This is really amazing. Y'all have done a great job.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Peoples?
Tara, this, it, this is actually amazing. I have long said homelessness required a multi-pronged approach, and what you all are doing is absolutely fabulous. Those are the kinds of things I think we need to do. I know, I'm going to piggyback on Councilwoman Hill there and say, on September the 25th, I know you're meeting in District 5 with my historic Handley team. And so I'd like to know how soon we can start moving this project to other areas of the city, because District 5 really needs it.
Councilmember Beck?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Councilmember Hill said. I think the pilot has been successful. So one, thank you for spearheading this and being such an integral part of it. You don't often get thanked enough for the hard work you do and working with our MPOs to get these folks. And identified and in housing is a big deal. I know that there was, it took us a little longer than we would have liked to scale the, the project up to where it is today. And so I think Councilmember Hill's words are particularly meaningful in that regard. I would also like to see this scaled up. So I know that, that, that means a whole nother, you know, the, the likelihood of a whole nother team with MHMR being brought on board, because this is a team-based approach. And so for the next year, I think I'd like to see what that looks like as well, about scaling it to, to other parts of the city without, I guess, taking the, the warning that we, that we heated in your presentation, that scaling it up too quickly or too fast, you don't see the results. And I think what makes this powerful is that for those areas that we identified, they are experiencing such great levels or the, you know, the impacts they have to people, not necessarily with homelessness, but mental health issues. So I know we've seen a, a big difference in the areas that, that you've been working in District 9, so thank you.
Councilwoman Flores?
Tara, question, well, first, thank you for the presentation, and again, appreciation to our MPOs and the audience for what they do. I'd like to know what major lessons or takeaways that, you know, your team may have garnered from the Safe Night LLC. that, you know, your team may have garnered from the Safe Night LLC safety studies that we've done. And I'm speaking specifically, this is just one area where we see homelessness, right in our entertainment districts. What takeaways, applicable takeaways have you identified there?
If memory serves, I did read this study a few months ago. Some of the things described are a lot of times what happens on the ground. So there's a lot of really practical problem solving. So sometimes our office receives multiple calls from business districts or neighborhoods that are very concerned. And sometimes what we're able to do, particularly with businesses, is put together a meeting. And so we have someone from the Hope Team there, the NPO, other departments as necessary, and just let them kind of tell us what issues they're experiencing because that's important for people to be heard. And then offer suggestions. And so far, that, I've seen that approach work in many meetings very well. Whereas people will say, okay, you know what? We are giving mixed messages is like if we have a business complex and some business owners are reporting, like every time they see homelessness, while another business is giving away food. And so that just like really on-the-ground, practical problem solving about what business owners can do differently to help police has been really helpful. And so I know that was talked about, that problem solving, and I think that does happen a lot that I've seen.
And one more thing, again, specific since the Stockyards area in the North Side corresponds to one of the High Impact Areas. Seem to recall you did speak with the Stockyards Business Association some time back. You may have, I don't know if that's, you know, accurate. But just as a suggestion, you know, I can help you with that. If you can make outreach to them, maybe share some of this with them because I'm having to field a lot of those questions.
Okay.
Coming from more of a subject matter expert, you know, I'm going to go further.
Okay, I'd be happy to talk with them.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilwoman LaShaw?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tara, for the presentation. Like Councilwoman Beck will always point out, math is not a Marine strong suit. So right now, we have 49 housed. Is that correct? Okay, and so is it for the rest that have, I guess, keep turning down services, they don't want them? Is it for lack of capacity right now that we can't push others into the program or put others into the program? Or there's just no one else is accepting it right now?
Right, good question. So it is a capacity question. So in the budget, there is capacity to house 40 individuals. And so we have done that. And then we have used a state grant to give us some additional capacity. We had another 20 vouchers that were committed for this purpose that we could not use. And so at this point, we don't have any more housing assistance. So it's kind of like the situation's kind of flipped from a year ago. A year ago, you know, I was calling a lot of NPOs and being like, hey, let's talk about this. And now we're, I'm getting a lot of calls from NPOs about, okay, I have another list. I have four other people in North Side. I have five people in near South Side. And that's one of the things we're really struggling with is because we don't have that capacity right now to be able to house more.
Okay, so for the 98, I guess, potential clients that were identified, I assume not all 98 were actually contacted and offered because if there's not enough for them, then I don't want to get their hopes up, right? So if we do expand the program, we get additional capacity, we get landlords that agree to join the program, then the rest in those 98 identified, that's when they'll be reached out to and offered services?
Okay, so my understanding is all 98 have been tried to reach out to.
Okay.
We moved some to what we call like an inactive tab. So if our street outreach, but really more importantly, the NPO, if the NPO hasn't seen them in nine months, we kind of put them on this inactive tab. Where we're not, we're not like spending the time searching for them. The NPOs know they can call us if they see someone that's resurfaced, and that's happened a couple of times. Some of our, unfortunately, some of our referrals have also passed away during this process. I believe about three or four of the referrals have passed away during this process. And so, but we did have a chunk that we weren't able to make contact with.
Gotcha. And then one more question regarding the, as you know, whenever we hear the severely mentally ill, some see that as that's a danger to themselves or others, and they're being placed in communities where neighbors may not know what's going on or should they for privacy concerns. But for those who may be identified as, like, they can't live on their own, but they also refuse service, what happens with them as far as like being identified and I guess what happens there?
Okay, so in situations where the person is deemed a danger to themselves or others. So we asked our CIT team to connect with High Impact several months ago when they started running into some situations like that. And sometimes the work of the High Impact Team is helping people to get into JPS psychiatric. And so when it crosses that line of danger to self and danger to others, that's when those things kick in. And so the difference is, though, if they're in high impact, they have a place to exit to when they're discharged from JPS psychiatric.
Okay.
Or another institution. So, sorry. So that's how we kind of deal with that. So we're not, so if there's any kind of danger, law enforcement is involved if needed or that involuntary hospitalization.
Okay, got it. So I mean, I just really wanted to reiterate the point that those who are being placed in neighborhoods that they are safe neighbors or
Yes.
There's no, there should be no concern, I guess, is the point.
No.
So thank you for helping to reiterate.
They're people that are receiving treatment and have a big team picking out after them.
Which is amazing. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Tara, a few questions. I was just talking with Jay about this, too. I know on one of your final slides on August 12, you'll bring an MNC forward to continue the High Impact Pilot. And it looks like that budgetal amount will be just north of $2 million. Jay was just explaining to me that's about a 16-month total. It's not, it's a little bit less than that for 12 months, just based on when we started the pilot. What I'm getting to ultimately is we think it costs the city of Fort Worth anywhere between $40,000 to $50,000 for each individual we're housing. Correct?
So my understanding, the 2.1 million, that was for this 12 months, for fiscal year '25.
Okay, so if that's the case, then it's just south of $44,000 for 50 people. And he said 49, 50, which is fine. I'm just kind of calculating. And this, I think this is important as we talk about the High Impact Pilot. Because I would assume, our hope is that on an year-over-year basis, we're moving people through the system.
Right.
Getting them out of what's probably the most expensive triage system of services, which is what this pilot is, to get people off the streets.
Right.
And then move them into a voucher program or some other sustainable sorts of funding when they may not need the full wraparound services, PSH notwithstanding, right?
Yes.
So as we grapple with this, acknowledging how expensive it is to get someone off the street that's been there, you know, seven years on average is what you're telling us. And the amount of staff time and dedication. And if we scale up the program, which there seems to be a lot of interest around the table to make sure the entire city is covered, what that's going to really, per individual, getting them off the street. But long-term, what that allows to get them off the system. You mentioned that, you know, the frequent flyer 911 caller, which is not the average. But those individuals, if you talk with Tarrant County and JPS, how much they're costing taxpayers on average per year is pretty extreme. That's just one thing I think we need to kind of calculate in this. And obviously, working with Lauren and her team at Partnership Home. And when you triage an individual and then hopefully how it steps down over time, that the cost to house that individual, get them back on their feet is actually not $43,000 in perpetuity, but we're able to release that amount of money over the duration.
Right.
Okay.
And we had looked at it, I think there's many ways to look at it. We kind of looked at it as 80 clients being able to receive those psychiatric services.
Absolutely.
And then it is an expensive program, and that's why it's very targeted. But we're also thinking about, like, if this person wasn't in high impact, if they were in a state psychiatric hospital, that's about $270,000.
Couldn't agree more, which is a perfect segue to my next comment. So this last legislative session, they started to nibble around the edges around what the state of Texas wants to do on homelessness. And I would argue they have a lot more to learn. We all do, right? And more people like you at the table. I think you and I should work together on an interim charge request to our state delegation on what this pilot has done for Fort Worth. And to your point about what it costs the state of Texas, if you do put an individual in some type of state psychiatric facility, how expensive that treatment really is, and there's other ways to do this, and allow Fort Worth to be a good example. Because there were a few pieces of legislation I think we could have supported, but there were others that, quite frankly, we're just not really going to move the needle for larger urban areas like we are having in Fort Worth. Councilmember Beck?
I do think you're right. It is an expensive program, mainly because of the mental health care that it's working. But I did a quick Google search because your number kind of piqued my interest. And it says, on average, it costs a community to support a homeless individual about $36,000 a year. So what we're spending here is really comparable to what we as a community, whether it's through Uspire, through Hope, Union Gospel Mission, are collectively spending. So when you look at it that way, it is an expensive program for us to fund, but we're spending about the same amount of dollars as a community anyway for them, and they're not housed.
And I would agree. And if you also think about taking those numbers, you can use a few different statistics we want to compile together. But also working with Tarrant County and JPS to understand if the city of Fort Worth has stepped up in this way in partnership with MHMR, what that's allowing them to do to lessen the burden on both mental health services and just additional emergency care at JPS Hospital in particular. So my last comment or question for you is how much opportunity have you had to brief leaders in philanthropy on this pilot so far?
I have not briefed them yet.
Okay, we can work on that, obviously, into the fall. I think they'll be really intrigued by what you've accomplished and your team.
I was just going to say, the reason that I am so inspired by this is homelessness is not just a Fort Worth problem, it's a national problem. And if we as a city can come up with a way to start cracking this problem, I mean, we would, we could lead the nation in how we do this. And so I am so pleased with the pilot and to hear it. And, you know, I talked about District 5. I think we picked areas where we really had large pockets of homelessness. But I think everybody around this table will agree that homelessness has crept up in all of our districts, and we've got to get our hands around it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Peoples. And well done, Tara. You really responded, you and your entire team, to some frustration that was expressed during work sessions and in private meetings from council members of how are we really going to deal with our individuals that we have in our communities that we know are at the end of their rope? And you've really done a fantastic job. And to Susan and her entire team at MHMR, thank you for agreeing to be partnered with us in the city. We hope that you feel that it's been fruitful as well. I know it's been an incredible amount of work, and you should be recognized for such. Thank you. Okay, council, our last presentation is a response to recent requirements for federal grants. And Dana Bergdahl will lead this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to brief you today on recent requirements affecting our federal grants and how we recommend that the city respond. And I apologize for my voice getting over a cold, so I've got my water just in case I need it. All right, if we can get the presentation on the screen? All right, thank you very much. So I'm going to review with you this afternoon the changing federal requirements affecting the federal grants that we receive. I'll review those grants that the city of Fort Worth currently has that are active, go over the impacts of potentially losing federal funds if we don't receive them, the penalties for not complying with the federal requirements, our recommendations to comply and to also support small businesses, and then the impact of using city funds to potentially try to replace the federal funds, and then our proposed next steps. So I want to thank LeAnn and Teresa James and their teams for helping to track all of the federal activity related to federal grants and federal orders. There's Supreme Court cases, executive orders, and directives from federal agencies that prohibit the use of race, color, national origin, sex, religion, and so on as criteria for participation in programs and services. And so federal grant recipients, including the city and other local governments across the country, will be required to certify that we do not have such programs, have those criteria for such programs, even if we're not using federal funds for those programs. So I want to be quick to note that, to date, none of these changing federal requirements affect our city's Human Relations Ordinance, our ability to enforce the Americans with Disabilities Act, our Reasonable Accommodation Ordinance, Civil Rights Act, fair housing, and fair employment. So the city today has active about $277 million worth of federal grants. Some of them are multi-year. They are both for capital projects as well as operating programs. You'll see they impact about 10 different departments across the city, with the largest being within our Neighborhood Services Department, and the second biggest category being in transportation, both transportation and public works and aviation. So within this group of grant projects or grant awards, we have and have relied on for a number of years, annual awards from the federal government to run federal programs and to also fund city employees. We're at about 120 full-time equivalent city employees that are funded with federal grant dollars. That's across five different departments. Again, with the bulk of that being within our Neighborhood Services Department at just under $35 million. So about 40, a little over 40 million total that we receive each year. So just as a reminder, our Neighborhood Services Department, most of their federal funds come through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is for the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home, HAPWA, Emergency Solutions Grant, and so on. You'll see that they serve thousands of families and individuals across Fort Worth. Want to be, want to note that some of these numbers are maybe duplicated in that there are families and individuals who do receive different kinds of services from the city as well as the partner agencies that we help fund with these dollars. But this includes rental assistance, utility assistance, rental rehabilitation, priority repair, emergency shelter, and so on. So the Neighborhood Services programs primarily benefit individuals and families who live within the CDBG or Community Development Block Grant eligible areas. You'll see those depicted here on the screen, primarily within the central city, within Loop 820, but also some significant areas outside the loop. And then that next category of significant grants includes the transportation projects through the U.S. Department of Transportation. So this is just projects managed through the Transportation and Public Works Department. This does not include the aviation grants. And you'll see on the map on the right, a depiction of where those current grant projects are located. Again, some of these are multi-year projects. They could include intersection improvements, railroad crossings, safe routes to school, street scape projects, other reconstruction, and partnerships with TechStop. So penalties for noncompliance. So if the city were to certify that we did not have programs that were based on criteria associated with race, ethnicity, and gender in order to receive federal funds, but did in fact still have those programs, then we'd be subject to these penalties. in fact still have those programs, then we'd be subject to these penalties. One is the loss of those existing federal funds that we have today. The other would be the loss of future federal funds. Next is, as a federal grant recipient, we sign grant agreements with these federal agencies for the grants, and so the city employees are individually subject to civil and criminal liability under the False Claims Act for signing a grant agreement if we're, have such programs that we're not supposed to with these federal funds. And then lastly, the city itself is subject to treble damages, meaning triple damages, against the city. So as the example, if we have our $40 million in annual federal grant awards, that times three, we could potentially be having to pay up to $121 million in damages for such a penalty. So our recommendation to avoid these penalties and to avoid the loss of federal funds is to recommend that the city council adopt a resolution to suspend the council-approved programs that we have that provide a benefit based on race, ethnicity, or gender. These include our Business Equity Ordinance, our MWBE requirements in our economic development incentive policies, such as our 380 Agreement and tax abatement policies, also suspending the duties of the Diversity and Inclusion Department that are prescribed in City Code addressing racial, ethnic, and gender disparities, and then any other applicable council-approved programs that we might find. Separately from that, staff through the leadership of our city manager would administratively revise any other programs as needed. So we also recommend that staff develop a more robust small business development program. This would be in partnership with our Economic Development Department that already provides some small business services, perhaps partnering with other agencies in the community that can help us achieve that. In addition, we recommend that we continue to use the city's local preference ordinance for local businesses during our procurement process when we're purchasing with local funds, that as required under state law, that we continue to utilize historically underutilized businesses for purchasing with state funds or city dollars greater than $3,000. And lastly, that we procure disadvantaged business enterprises as required through purchasing with Federal Department of Transportation or Environmental Protection Act dollars as currently required. So one of the things we looked at was to try to understand what would, what would it look like if the city were to try to supplant the federal funds with city funds, looking at our general fund tax dollars. So on the upper left, you'll see the table there showing the 40 million in the operating grant dollars that we receive and the 120 employees that are funded through those. And then right below that are the capital projects that are currently funded that are about $118 million. And then on the right, you'll see through our Fort Worth lab, they've equated those federal grant dollars to the city's tax rate, so that you can see on the operations side, those operating grants would be a little over 0.3 cents, 0.34 cents added to our tax rate. And down below, the capital projects would add almost 10 cents to our tax rate, for a total of about 13 cents that would be added to our tax rate. And below that, you'll see the math on our current tax rate at 67 and 1/4 cents, and how that could increase potentially if we were to try to use city dollars to cover that, be almost a 20% increase in the city's tax rate. The impact on that to your average homeowner in Fort Worth, looking at a home that's appraised at $300,000, if we apply the 20% homestead exemption, giving the value, the taxable value at $240,000, that would equate to roughly about a $320 impact on their annual tax bill. So again, our recommended next step is the resolution to suspend the pertinent ordinances and programs to comply with federal law, and those, that would be in effect July 1, and the action on that would come before you on July, excuse me, June 24th, next Tuesday, June 24th. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dana. Questions from council? Councilmember Flores.
Dana, thanks for the presentation. Obviously, this is concerning import, right? It's very impactful. But I'll start off by asking this. I don't know what slide that was in, but with the Diversity and Inclusion Department, I think I saw that there were five employees that would be affected by these recommendations. Is that correct?
That's correct. They receive dollars through HUD and the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission to reimburse us for our fair housing and fair employment activities.
Can you give us some idea what happens to them as employees?
So if we adopt the resolution, nothing would happen to those employees. They would remain employed. We would continue to use those federal dollars to fund their positions, just like the other positions that you see listed here on the screen.
So their service and work to the city will continue just in other capacities?
So what you may be asking me, let me just, just to be clear, the employees depicted on this slide work specifically with fair housing and fair employment. But if we come to the recommendation slide where we're asking that you suspend the Business Equity Ordinance, it's a different team that is funded with the general fund dollars that works on the Business Equity Ordinance. So just want to clarify, it's a different set of employees that work on our Business Equity Ordinance.
Those are the, if I can, if I may, those are the employees that would be impacted. And our goal, as what happens with, with positions that go away, is would try to find their opportunities in other parts of the city where their skills match up with jobs. And so the goal is not to have anybody leave the city if possible.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. The definition of, I think it was the first, the second slide you had up there. Yeah, the second slide. Can you define that a little bit better than, a little more in detail? What, was this an executive order signed by the president? When was it signed? What was, can you define that a little bit more?
Yeah, I might need to defer to our Law Department to help me on the legal piece, but I will say that it does have to do with providing a benefit to a class of people based on race, ethnicity, or gender. So if there's a benefit based on race, ethnicity, or gender, that that's the activity that's prohibited.
Hi, Teresa James, Deputy City Attorney. The executive orders we started seeing started happening pretty immediately after President Trump took office. Those really were directed at administrative agencies of the federal government. What we really started noticing is that we started getting letters, probably March, April, from some of these federal agencies that were stating to us what we're going to have to do to continue receiving the federal funding. So that's what we're really responding to, these letters from the agencies, and not so much the executive orders. But they do kind of stack on each other.
What agencies are you referring to?
Pretty much all of the federal agencies. This is going to affect in one way or the other. Sorry. FAA, we have received some notification on some grant assurances for the FAA. HUD is another one. LeAnn, I don't know if you can, yeah, DHS. But we anticipate that most, if not all, the federal agencies are going to have these requirements.
Okay, and they're basically asking us, do we have programs that benefit race, sex, religion?
What they're actually doing is, they are taking a case, which is a Harvard case that was actually decided in 2024, that looked at how Harvard was making race-based decisions on who entered Harvard, and applying that more broadly. We do know that there's also a Northern District case that also takes that same interpretation, which is why we're really paying attention to all of that.
Thank you. So when we look at this, I think I have a question in just a second. When we look at this and talk about, it's basically doing away with the steps that we have taken with diversity and inclusion, in which we took those steps long before I got here as a city, as a state, and others, because the benefit of our Black and our Brown communities, those who do construction work, those who participate, didn't have the ability to get work or scale at certain levels as others. And so we put in these measurements to give them opportunities. And so I have quite a bit of heartburn, and I understand this is coming down from the federal government. And it's not due to staff here locally, but this is a political thing that our federal government is doing, and we are nonpartisan. And so this directly affects people in our communities, how to eat at the table. And I'm specifically talking to the point of removing the Business Equity Ordinance and the MWBE requirements on economic development. Those are major issues for me that I typically can, I cannot support in this ordinance and resolution. I do have or appreciate you articulating and writing down how this will affect employees. And when we had this conversation prior to this, one of the things that Dr. Williams talked about is, when do we take a stand of, for our city residents and what we believe historically are, is the right thing to do? And so I really have a heartburn on supporting this resolution. I won't, as of right now, I'm not supporting it. I think the city, and I appreciate the tax measure that you showed today, but we have really been a city where we've been able to mush things together. And I think there's a better, there's another approach that we have. I understand that we're pushed up with time. I don't feel comfortable with signing a resolution in June, and we really haven't did more diligently work of how we can support these 270 employees only through the federal, only through tax, increasing tax. We know we're not going to increase the taxes by 19%. I mean, that's, that's not rocket science. And so I think we could put together a more better way to show how we can move those dollars to keep those employees. And so basically, diversity and inclusion goes away. And so, and I heard our city manager say that we may can find them jobs, which is not a guarantee, but I know we're going to do our, our due diligence to do that. And of course, this is not an attack on us as a city, but this is an attack on what's happening at the federal level. And so right now, I don't feel comfortable with moving forward with a resolution.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Hill?
Dana, thank you for this, and thank you for breaking it down. Will you go back to, I think the slide you were referring to, Councilman Nettles, the math, the basic math?
Oh.
So outside of the math, what other consequences, legal or otherwise, would the city face if we do not comply?
Certainly. So it's the, the loss of funds that we talked about, and whether we choose to replace those or not is obviously a policy question. And then, again, depending on whether it's sort of a decision to not sign the grant agreements and to not receive those funds, right, then really we're just talking about that loss of, of the federal funds. I think the question comes that if the city council would like to receive federal grants and that, you know, as employees, certainly myself, as an assistant city manager who signs grant agreements for the Neighborhood Services Department, I would be reluctant to do so if I were having to certify that we don't have a, a program that provides a benefit based on race, you know, ethnicity, or gender.
As a city manager, it would be unfair for me to ask employees to put themselves in that kind of position, both civilly and criminally liable, for signing a document that they know does not meet the requirements. And so, in essence, we don't sign those grant agreements, the, the grants go away. So we don't receive the grants this coming year, and any outstanding grants that we're waiting to receive the dollars on, those would go away as well. So that's, it's a predicament that we've been put in. As Councilman Nettles said, it's coming from the federal government. And so we're in the situation where the choice is really, we move forward as is, and we then need to do without federal grants going forward? Or we make these changes, and then we can sign the grant agreements and say that those programs don't exist and continue to receive the grants.
Councilmember Peoples?
So Dana, I want to thank you all and Jay for the due diligence you put into putting the presentation together. So this is not aimed at anybody around this table, but in 2024, the census said we're over a million people. We're the 11th most populous city in the United States and the fourth most populous city in Texas. And if you look at how we are, what our ethnicities, I can't even talk now, we're 36.6% white, 34.8% Hispanic, 19.2% African American, and 5.1% Asian. We are one of the most diverse cities in the United States of America. And I guess what gives me heartburn is that these programs were started as a remedy to discrimination, and they allowed members of the Hispanic, African American, Asian American communities, and others to build generational wealth, and that is how we started having a Black and Brown middle class. And for us to just say, we're going to do away with it, gives me heartburn. And I think I have been very clear, Mayor, that this, while I understand some of the financial implications, I too cannot support it and wish we would go back to the drawing table and try to find other ways, because I think we are in danger of sending a signal to our residents, to our residents, that 34.8% Hispanic, that 19.2% African Americans, that 5.1% Asian Americans, that we don't care about them. And that's not the city of Fort Worth that I know and love.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Yeah, Mayor, I did ask for something, and when we met about this the last time, when we talked, when we talk about the MWBE requirements and ordinance, and I know it's going to be a lengthy process, but how do we reorganize those for, to make it even across the board? And so what that means is, when we talk about general contractors in economic development, you get to pick a general contractor, and then you have to have, I think it's 15% MW subcontracting working on that project. And one of the things they look forward to on the subcontracting is because they can't meet the bonding as it is on the general contracted level, or even the insurance piece, being bonded to insurance, sometimes it's over millions of dollars. And so they look forward to the subcontract. So I want to see that forward, to really go back and look at how we do our contracting within the city, such as the Water Department, the D.J.'s Department, whatever. Development Services. And look at each one, case by case, to make it fair or even equitable across the board. That will give me more reasons to support just suspending, when we know we're going to make efforts in other locations to, to build that capacity back up for our Black and Brown communities.
So as Dana mentioned, we're going to move forward here, the support for small businesses. The intent is, as a city manager, what I'd like to do is go forward and create a more robust small business development program that would be open to all small businesses. And our partners with the Hispanic Chamber and Metropolitan Black Chamber here, Michelle Greenford and Erica Garza. And so we, what we want to do is work with them, work with the Fort Worth Chamber, to develop a program that we can look at all those issues, where small businesses in general, and it won't be tied to race, gender, or ethnicity, but a small business in general, what kind of programs can we develop, both on the procurement side of the city, for our contracts, as well as try to create more of that connection with larger projects and larger programs and users in the city of Fort Worth? There are, there are models, but what we're going to be trying to do, I think, doesn't exist. A lot of programs have small business-related programs, but they're tied to like SBA, right, the Small Business Administration. You look at their guidelines, some of those small businesses are 50, 60 million dollar a year, and they consider them small, because they are small compared to the billions a year. I think for, for locally here in Fort Worth, what we want to target are small businesses. So we would have different categories based on the type of business that really is, that looks at what is a small business in this industry, that industry, and another industry, and that's how we have to create a program. So that's going to take us a little bit. We want to start that dialogue with the chambers and the work here during this break, so that hopefully be, by the end of the fiscal year, we can actually have a semblance of a program that we can bring forward to the council. That's, that's our intent. That's our intent.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Just one, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilwoman Lars Dorff.
Thank you, Mayor. Dana, right now, are there any indications that there will be any changes to HUD certifications? I know right now, we're still looking at those, but have you seen any indications that those may go away as well, or that that may be affected?
I've not seen anything yet, unless law has about state law and HUD. There was nothing that, you know, passed through the state legislature this last session that affected that requirement. I do am aware that there's lawsuits related to the federal government's disadvantaged business enterprise requirements for DOT and EPA grant funds, and we'll be watching those to see if that impacts those requirements.
Okay. And I would just say, this may be a good opportunity for all of our chambers in City Fort Worth and our small business development, to really drive home how HUD certifications work, and in fact, that actually majority of those are actually minority-owned businesses, and also includes women-owned businesses, which last disparity studied in Fort Worth, I believe, showed that there was no longer disparity with women-owned businesses, so that requirement was removed. However, if that woman-owned business is, if they have their HUD certification, which is not difficult to get, then they still would qualify for this. So in essence, we're opening up additional opportunities under HUD certification. So I think it's one of those, those, I guess, best-kept secrets out there on how HUD certifications work, because better-known small businesses also fall under, they could get their HUD certification. So I think if we do move forward with this, in order to keep two hundred and seventy-seven million dollars and ensure we keep jobs here as well, then maybe we do better job of communication, getting what we can do legally, getting that information out there, like HUD certifications.
I think we can do that while they're in place. I personally think those last two checkmarks will be going away by the end of the year.
Gotcha.
Any other questions or comments from council? No. Dana, just a few points, and this may also be for Leanne and Jay to point out. It's my understanding that the reason, the timing of this before we go on July break is because of an aviation federal grant, correct, with FAA, is creating the expediency need. Yeah, I just wanted to point that out. I know Councilwoman Nettles pointed, you know, sort of some consternation about the timing of this, but that's one big reason why. And there's two more.
There's additional, two more of the grants that.
That are coming. Yeah, we also have a DOT grant we want to apply for that we'll be bringing to you June 24th, related to Americans with Disabilities Act funding, particularly related to our infrastructure, street infrastructure facilities, and so on.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And then the other question, probably for Leanne and Jay and Dana, is you've, y'all worked on this pretty heavily for several months before you brought it to council, to kind of know what your, what your legal advice would be. Do you feel like all rocks are overturned? You've really looked to make sure this is the best possible course of action here?
Yes, we've, we've looked at it and relooked at it. We've been on calls, national calls with other cities across the nation. I think everyone's facing the same kind of choice, and so yes, I think that we've vetted it as thoroughly as we could.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I know there is consternation about the tax rate, but if you look at our funding sources, the general fund's the only one that is a funding source that could replace these type of activities. When you look at capital on the city side for infrastructure, it comes from the general fund. When you look at operations, it comes from the general fund. You can't take it from the water fund, for instance, you can't take it from stormwater. We just don't have any other sources where you'd be able to obtain this kind of funding other than the general fund. I mean, the other option would be, you would do some of it and not all of it, but then you'd have to decide what programs stay and which ones would go away, so. But we just wanted to show the magnitude and the reality that's kind of, that we're having to deal with here.
Appreciate that, Jay. Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you, Dana. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Council, that's the conclusion of our presentations today. I'll open it up for future items for anybody that may have one. Councilwoman Flores?
This is related, I guess, to the briefings we've gotten about homeless encampments. I request that Environmental Services, PARD, and Human Strategies and Services Manager, Tara, and our HOPE unit get together to discuss and evaluate what heavily vegetated areas, and several of these are going to coincide with our homeless heat maps, lend themselves for clearing of dense ground cover and trimming of trees. What I've been finding in my discussions with HOPE unit, MPO, and Co-Compliance Services is that repeatedly, we have to visit and revisit these areas because they're an attractive place for homeless folks to go and, you know, take shelter and hide out. It also, I think, if we clear it, you know, to some degree, raised trees, canopies, that's a longer-lasting, you know, solution to deter homeless camps. And also, that clearing makes areas safer and adds more effective access for law enforcement and our homeless teams.
Thank you, Carlos. Any other guests? Carly?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to get an IR on the fleet vehicle repair process and funding, as well as the fleet vehicle acquisition process, just really kind of help dispel some myths or rumors out there around city-owned vehicles going to city facility to be repaired, being charged, you know, four or five times what the rates are in the private sector. Just kind of get some more clarity on that, please.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Beck?
I'd like a presentation on, on the efforts that our city has to inspect our boarding homes, our group homes, the short-term rentals, those kind of congregate or otherwise alternative living situations that we monitor here as a city. And then also, all right, I'm going to say this word, next year is a big year for the United States. It's our semi-qucentennial, and so there's a lot going on. I think civic engagement and civics is something that we lack, not just in our community, but nationally. And so I'd like our departments, mainly library, public engagement, our community centers, to really bring forward a plan for what our activities here in the city of Fort Worth are going to be to celebrate that birthday, but specifically how we can use that to spur a conversation about civics in the city.
Anyone else? Future items? Okay, with that, we're adjourned until 5:00 PM. Thank you.